Well, good evening, everyone. How are we doing? So, moments before I came here, I had gone into my bedroom to relax for a moment. All of a sudden, it gets quiet in my house. So, what's going on? My children decided to take the liberty of going and starting the vehicle so that they could go and watch a show in the vehicle without asking to watch the show. So, as they're in the vehicle and I'm resting, it's quiet in the house. All of a sudden, my dog jumps down, goes somewhere, don't know where he is. And the leftovers that I was letting cool down before I stored it, he decided to get into it, which involved spicy sausage, Angie. Deer sausage, though, actually, was very delicious. Proceeded to somehow get it off of the countertop, and then it broke everywhere, so there's shards of plastic and spicy, American chop suey deliciousness just all over the place. And then I had to go into the car and be like, alright, well, whose idea was it to just, you know, decide to just take liberties to do? I share all this to tell you guys that I'm a human being. And patience were tested, for sure. But it's just like, man, I've always feel like when that stuff happens, it's like the Lord's teaching me something, or the enemy's trying to come after me and try to distract me from something, because tonight, we're talking about who is the Spirit of God? Who is the Holy Spirit? The power of the Holy Spirit? How we commune with the Spirit? And there's so much power and so much to be learned tonight. It's so exciting, and I think to myself, man, how ironic that the one night, you know, that we're about to do this, and this has been a fantastic series that we've been doing, but I just thought, wow, this is the night of all nights, that the flesh would try to come and rear its ugly face when the Spirit is the thing that needs to be fed in the moment. Well, we had a good, it was good, it was a good reconciliation. Everybody's good, all is forgiven, no child was harmed. There were thoughts, but no child was harmed. Just dinner that was so good. Thank you, honey, for making that. And now, I'm just sad that it's, I can't have anymore. So, that's the sad part of it, so. But, let's stand as we go into worship tonight. Hallelujah, Jesus, we just thank you. We thank you for your presence. We thank you, God, for what you're doing in our church, in our lives, in our families. God, your Spirit is stirring, it's evident. There's things that are happening, Lord, that are happening in the unseen realm, God, and I'm so grateful for the faith that's rising. Lord, I pray for my friends that are here today, that, Lord, that if they are beginning to see trials and things begin to come against them, God, I pray that they would not be discouraged, but they would understand that Jesus, that they're doing something in the spiritual realm that's stirring things up. It's not a moment for us to be afraid. It's not a moment for us to cower back. It's a moment for us to rise up in our faith and learn that God, through endurance, through testing, that, God, there's something that you're trying to cultivate inside of us. Lord, I pray that when we get pushed back, when there are things that don't turn out the way that we want them to, God, may we not run back to our old vices, but, God, may we run to your throne, may we run to your feet, may we throw ourselves at your feet and say, "God, I don't have it inside of me", but, God, I pray that there would be a declaration inside of every single one of us as we talked about it on Sunday, that, "Jesus, you are enough." The "I am" is enough. Lord, may we know the power of your Spirit tonight. As we go into worship, we welcome your Spirit into this place, your presence into this place, and we love you and we thank you in your name. Amen. Sing this blessed assurance. Blessed as sure as Jesus is mine. Oh, what a foretaste of glory divine, air of salvation purchased of God, born of his Spirit, washed in his blood. Come on, this is my story. And this is my story. This is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story. This is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Perfect submission, perfect delight. Visions of rapture, visions of rapture now burst on my side. Angels descend bring from above echoes of mercy and whispers of love. Come on, this is my story. And this is my story. This is my song. We're gonna praise him, praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. Perfect submission and all is at rest. I and my Savior am happy and blessed, watching and waiting looking above filled with his goodness, lost in his love. 'Cause this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. 'Cause this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. Hallelujah. I've tried so hard to see it. Took me so long to believe it. That you choose someone like me to carry your victory. Affection could never earn it. Give what you don't deserve him. You take the broken things and raise them to glory. You are my champion. Giants fall and you stand undefeated. Every battle you've won. I am who you say I am. You crown me with confidence. I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated with the one who has conquered it all. Now I can finally see it teaching me how to receive it. So, let all the striving cease. This is my victory. You are my champion. Giants fall and you stand undefeated. Every battle you've won. I am who you say I am. You crown me with confidence. I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated with the one who has conquered it all. Oh, you've conquered it all. You're our champion, our soon coming king. When I lift my voice and shout, every wall comes crashing down. I have the authority that Jesus has given me. And when I open up my mouth, miracles start breaking out. I have the authority that Jesus has given me. When I lift my voice and shout, every wall comes crashing down. I have the authority. Come on, Jesus has given me. When I open up my mouth, miracles start breaking out. I have the authority that Jesus has given me. 'Cause you are my champion. Giants fall and you stand undefeated. Every battle you've won. I am who you say I am. You crown me with confidence. I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated. By the power of your name, I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated with the one who has conquered it all. 'Cause when I lift my voice and shout, every wall comes crashing down. I have the authority. Come on, let's believe that tonight. That Jesus has given me. And when I open up my mouth, miracles start breaking out. I have the authority that Jesus has given me. 'Cause he's our champion. You are my champion. Giants fall and you stand undefeated. Every battle you've won. I am who you say I am. You crown me with confidence. I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated. By the power of your name, I am seated in the heavenly place undefeated with the one who has conquered it all. Jesus. Jesus, I pray that we would get that into the deepest parts of who we are. That you are the one who's undefeated. All authority in heaven and earth has been given unto you. And Jesus, you're calling us to be your disciples. You're calling us to be the disciple makers, God. And I pray that for all of us here in this place that are hungry for more of your Word, more of your truth, more of your Spirit in our life, God, that we would get that into our souls, that, God, we are on the winning side. That we are serving a God of victory, not a God of defeat, but a God of victory. We are not on the losing side, we are on the winning side. And in moments when we feel broken, when we feel lost, God, the enemy will do everything in his power to try to convince us that we are the losers, that we are on the losing side. But we know the truth. The truth has set us free and has opened our eyes, that we have a champion, that all authority in heaven and earth has been given to him. And that authority that he has given to us to see lives changed and transformed for his glory. God, I pray for miracles to break forth in this place. I pray for faith to rise in this place. God, I pray that we would never downplay anything, God, that we would look to you, the God of the impossible, and say, "God, I can't see how it's gonna work out, but I'm gonna trust you", because you are a God who does impossible things. May your faith rise in this place. May your spirit be recognized and have all authority, all movement in this place, God. That's what we want. We want your spirit here today. We love you, Lord. God, I pray your spirit just move through our Bible study tonight. Awaken our spirits, awaken our souls, bring things to light, God. We love you, Lord, and thank you in your name, amen. Amen. Well, we've got two more weeks of this wonderful study that we're doing with Francis' channel on the essentials of faith. And then we are gonna be going into a new series, which I'll be showing a promotion for you guys in a week, probably maybe this Sunday as well, about what it means to be disciple makers. I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, on Sunday, that, and I maybe didn't word it this way, but I'll word it with you guys here because you're hungry for it, and it's the truth is that we are missing out on the fullness of what it means to be a Christ follower when we are not discipling people. We are. We're really missing out on it. You know, Bible talks about Jesus, not only in his last words to his disciples about going in the Great Commission. We find in Acts, chapter 1, verse 8, that we are supposed to be his witnesses to all the people that are around us, that he calls us to be witnesses. Yes, it's one thing to share your faith with others. It's one thing to witness and to testify of what God has brought you through and how he's changed you, but it's just another thing to walk with somebody and to bear their burdens and to pray with them and see them, see chains come off of them, see the light bulb go off in their head, see the revelation of Jesus come more alive to them than ever before. Something very powerful about that. And so, I encourage you, if you don't know how to disciple somebody, if you wanna know how to be a better discipler, better follower of Jesus, if you feel like, man, I feel like there's something missing in my walk with Jesus, it might be that you're not discipling people. And a lot of times, we will get to a place of disqualifying ourselves from discipling, because we don't have the perfect life. We don't have everything together. Jesus looked at Peter and said, "Leave everything, follow me, and I will make you fisher of men." Other translations, "I will make you become a man who fishes after others, who draws people to him." So, really excited for that series that we're gonna be getting to, and that will go until basically the beginning of July. So, it'll be a good time for us there. So, we are in session five tonight on who is the Spirit? If you didn't get a copy of the notes, there's some in the back there for you, and we've got plenty. Our new secretary fixed the printer, took care of everything, made everything right, and got us plenty of copies this time. Wonderful. So, let's get into it tonight, we got a lot to go through. And tonight, as we're going through our Bible study tonight, we've, like I said, we've got one more session after this, section six, which is, "What is a Christian?" That's gonna be the last section for us, and then we have two weeks off. We're gonna have the award ceremony for the Royal Rangers and Girls ministry. Please come out to support our children here. And then the following, that there's a fun family game night that we just do to kind of celebrate the year of Royal Rangers and Girls ministry. So, be a part of that as well, it's gonna be a good time. So, here we are tonight on who is the Spirit? Man, I did tonight, the Holy Spirit, the divine third person of the Trinity indwells and empowers us when we trust in Jesus, revealing truth and giving us the ability to obey God. Isn't that amazing? The ability to obey God. 'Cause sometimes, I did not feel like obeying God today with my children in that moment an hour ago. There's a lot of, there was, he was on 81, and the flesh still go, right? The spirit's, spirit leaves you when you get in your car and get on 81, that's something like that, we're gonna work on that. But, but the Spirit revealing truth and giving us the ability to obey God, the head chains that we're talking about tonight, is to know that the Holy Spirit empowers us to live obediently. This is a big one. The heart change to feel comfortable by the Spirit's constant presence with our lives, with us, with us all the time, with our lives. That's kind of intimidating. I don't know about you, but sometimes, we can equate the Holy Spirit to just conviction. Alright? The goosebumps that you feel when you're doing something wrong that you know you're not supposed to be doing. There is so much more to the Holy Spirit than that. So much more to the Holy Spirit than just the conviction of the Holy Spirit. And so, for us to get comfortable with the Spirit's constant presence with us and life change, to regularly acknowledge the presence and influence of the Holy Spirit in our lives, in our prayer lives. I'll tell you right now, I probably looked like a crazy person on Easter, the night before Easter, when all the storm is raging around me and there are trees all around, and I'm just laughing. And Angie's like, thinking like, "Our insurance rates are gonna go through the roof", and I'm like, "God protected us!", like, I was like, completely, I'm, trust me, my wife was grateful that the Lord protected us and everything, but there was, it was a clear difference right there in the moment. I'm like, "God, thank you for protecting us, keeping us safe. Thank you that these trees didn't hit our house" and everything like that. And my lovely wife was like, "Yes, thank you, God, the insurance rates are gonna go through the roof. It's unbelievable." But, all that to be said is like, that's the thing, is when you have the presence of the Holy Spirit and recognizing his moments of his presence and influence in your life is such a comforting and wonderful thing as well. And one little note that I wanted to add to this as well is in the head change, to know the Holy Spirit empowers us to live obediently. How many times have you been revealed, or you've read Scripture, or you've read something, you realize you're not supposed to be doing something that you have been doing, and then you try to go do it in your own strength and your own ability? And then you fall on your face, and then you get frustrated because it wasn't the Holy Spirit leading you. Listen to me, I'm gonna tell you this real quick, and this might be a hot take for Pastor Joel. Everything in the Word of God, God wants you to accomplish. The promises that he has for you, they're yes and amen, they're forever. It will always be that way. But when we start to try to take the knowledge of this in our brains and try to use it as some kind of self-help book, we are selling ourselves short of the power of the Spirit that empowers you to live it out obediently. And there's an absence of something when we turn this into a self-help book. It's called grace. Do you understand? When we say, "Okay, I've got all these..." This can quickly be turned into the law. This can quickly be turned into, "Look at all the things that you do wrong. Look at it, look at all the sins, look at how sinful, look at how..." And the Spirit says, "No, there's grace. His kindness leads us to repentance, not his brutality, not his beating us over the head with the Bible. It's his grace that leads us, mercy and kindness, that leads us to that place of repentance." And I have found so many times where people, whether they're starting on their journey with the Lord, they've fallen away, they've come back, they're trying to rekindle the fire, whatever the case may be, they know, they know what's right and what's wrong. They have it in their head, but then it's used against them. And God says, "No, let my Holy Spirit guide you into all truth, into all righteousness, that you may reflect the Son." As 2 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 60, "That we may be changed from glory into glory, looking more and more like the Son." So, I encourage you with that. It's not just about knowledge, it's about following the Holy Spirit. In our previous lesson, Francis introduced the person of Jesus, who he is, how he loves us, and what he did for us. And we've been, it's been a couple of weeks, so you probably haven't remembered the exercises. We're gonna skip over that. But our kind of opening icebreaker question tonight is, "Which talent do you wish that you had?" What's a talent that you wish that you had? Singing. Thank you for saying that. Playing an instrument, okay, alright, yes. What else? What are some talents that you wish that you had?
The ability to sing on key.
Hmm. The ability to sing on key, that's a good one, okay. Keep rhythm right, yes. Some of us struggle with the two and four. It's okay, we love you anyways, that's alright. It's okay, we'll get you there. Healing. Healing, like the gift of healing? That's a good one, I like that one. I necessarily wouldn't put that in the talent category. That's more of a gifting. But we're gonna get into that tonight. Can you imagine that? That's, that's a good talent. Some of us were born to sing, while others can't carry a tune. Or perhaps you wish you were athletic but lacked coordination and strength. Some abilities are innate, while many can be grown and developed with practice. In our session today, Francis will explore the giver of spiritual gifts, the Holy Spirit. The Spirit does much more than just dole out special abilities. He makes dead things alive and living things flourish. Hallelujah. So, before we get into the lesson today, pay attention to how Francis answers the following questions. What phrases do we see in Scripture that refer to the Holy Spirit? That's the first one. And in what ways is the Spirit working in the lives of believers? You guys ready for it? Angie, are you back there still? Where'd you go? Oh, Dave, you got that? Just a simple drag over and full screen, thanks, my friend.
So, we're in our fifth session, and today, we're gonna talk about the Holy Spirit. And I wanna be so cautious because sometimes in the church, the Holy Spirit is left out, or we talk about Him almost like an it, or a thing, or we forget that we're talking about the third member of the Trinity. We're talking about God Himself. I, I, I wanna be careful even with my words because we're so used to talking about things, almost like looking through a microscope, you know, when you've done that, and you see these little things, and you're trying to describe it. And, and we can do the same thing with the Holy Spirit if we're not careful, almost looking at Him as though He's beneath us and we're trying to figure Him out, rather than understanding we're the ones down at the bottom of the microscope trying to understand this God who's looking upon us, that we're getting clues of what He is like through the life of Jesus, through His Word. And now, we're talking about Him. This is sacred. When we pray, the Lord's prayer, we're saying, "Hallow it, or sacred be your name." "Hallow it, or sacred be your name." And so, we are talking about God right now. And so I want to be very careful with my words and my thoughts and understanding from which place I'm speaking about Him, the Holy, Holy, Holy Spirit of God. We talked about Genesis 1:1. "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." What a lot of people don't realize is in Genesis 1, verse 2, it says, "The earth was without form and void, and darkness was over the face of the deep; and the Spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters." So in creation, it talks about the Spirit. Remember, we talked about Jesus. So Genesis 1:1 talks about God the Father. But then John 1:1 gives us a clue and says, "The word was with God, and the word was God; and all things were made through Him. Without Him, nothing was made that has been made." And then here in Genesis 1, verse 2, we also see the Spirit is there hovering over the waters. When the Bible talks about the Spirit of God, the word God is used interchangeably with the Holy Spirit. For example, in Acts, chapter 5, you have this story about this husband and wife and they're lying to the apostles about the amount of money they gave. And it says in verse 3, "Peter said, 'Ananias, why has Satan filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit and to keep back for yourself part of the proceeds of the land? While it remained unsold, did it not remain your own? And after it was sold, was it not at your disposal? Why is it that you have contrived this deed in your heart? You have not lied to man, but to God.'" So he says very specifically, "Why would you lie to the Holy Spirit?" Then the next verse, he says, "You're not lying to man, you're lying to God." It shows us that when we're referring to the Holy Spirit, we need to have reverence, honor. He is God. He was there at creation. That's why when Jesus sent us to make disciples in Matthew 28, He says, "Baptize them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit." There's a fascinating passage in John, chapter 14, starting in verse 15. He says, "If you love Me, you will keep My commandments; and I will ask the Father, and He will give you another helper to be with you forever, even the Spirit of Truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it neither sees Him nor knows Him. You know Him, for He dwells with you and will be in you." Jesus, when He's leaving the earth and explaining to disciples, "I'm going to leave the earth, but it's actually to your advantage," he says in chapter 16, verse 7, "It's actually to your advantage that I'm going away, because if I stay here, then I can't send the helper, the Holy Spirit." He recalls Him, "the Spirit of Truth." And he says, "You know Him, because He's with you and He will be in you." Now remember, we talked about God being this holy God who told Moses, "You can't see Me and live." And now you have Jesus, who became flesh and dwelt right there with us. So we couldn't see God in all of His glory. So He comes down in the form of a man, and the apostles are like, "Wow, we were there when He was flesh. We walked with Him. We got to see what God is like." But then Jesus takes it a step further. He says, "I am with you, and the Holy Spirit is with you, but I'm leaving. And when I'm leaving, I'm going to send Him to actually dwell inside of you." So you have this progression of this holy God in heaven who declares His glory to Moses, to Jesus coming down and dwelling with man. And then Jesus says, "Now it's going to be to your advantage when I leave." And you have in the book of Acts that Jesus made a promise, and He commanded them to wait for this gift. And then in Acts 2, the Spirit comes. This fire from heaven comes, lands upon them, and the Spirit fills them. And they go out, they perform these miracles. And then Peter preaches to the people. And he says, "Repent and be baptized for the forgiveness of your sins, and you will receive the Holy Spirit. This promise is for you, for your children, and for those who are far off." This is the promise given to us, that God would actually dwell inside of us. Please don't ever let that truth become common to you. This is sacred. This is the good news. Because our flesh and our bodies are prone to rebel against God, God says, "Well, then I am going to enter into you. You believe in My Son. You repent, be baptized for the forgiveness of your sins, and My Spirit will enter into you to give you the power to live obedient to My commands." Romans 8 describes this so well. Romans 8, starting in verse 9, it says, "You, however, are not in the flesh, but in the Spirit, if in fact the Spirit of God dwells in you." Anyone who does not have the Spirit of Christ does not belong to Him. But if Christ is in you, although the body is dead because of sin, the Spirit is alive because of righteousness. If the Spirit of Him, who raised Christ from the dead, dwells in you, he who raised Christ Jesus from the dead will also give life to your mortal bodies through His Spirit who dwells in you. So then, brothers, we are debtors, not to the flesh, to live according to the flesh; for if you live according to the flesh, you will die. But if by the Spirit you put to death the deeds of the body, you will live. For all who are led by the Spirit of God are sons of God; for you did not receive the spirit of slavery to fall back into fear, but you have received the spirit of adoption as sons, by whom we cry, 'Abba, Father.' The Spirit Himself bears witness with our spirit that we are children of God, and if children, then heirs, heirs of God and fellow heirs with Christ, provided we suffer with Him in order that we may also be glorified with Him." Now, that passage says so much. And in the beginning, it's a little confusing because he talks about how we're in the Spirit, and then he talks about the Spirit of God dwells in us. And then he says, "If you don't have the Spirit of Christ," it's how they're all used interchangeably. And that's again why we have this term where we go, "God, we don't completely understand You. You use this term, 'Holy Spirit,' and the Spirit of Christ, and the Spirit of God, and God, and so much of this is interchangeable that we're seeing that somehow you're perfectly one. And so we honor Father, Son, Holy Spirit. But in this passage, he's saying that it's through the Spirit, it's by His power, His indwelling power, that we can actually put to death the deeds of our flesh, those desires like Adam and Eve had, like, "I want that, I want that." God says, "And put My Spirit in you so that you can actually put those desires to death." And it's a process. It's part of the Christian life. It's through the power of the Holy Spirit we are able to resist and exercise self-control. But there's something else that's so beautiful in this passage. He says that it's when He puts His Spirit in us, it causes our spirit to cry out, "Abba, Father," that for most of us, it is not natural to think of a holy, all-powerful, glorious God and have the confidence to call Him Dad, Abba, Father. Especially those of us who never really had a good relationship with our earthly dads. Now we're looking at the most powerful being in existence and calling Him Daddy. The Bible says it's the Spirit, Romans 5:5, which we read, "who pours His love into our hearts." And here in chapter 8, and He causes our own spirits to be able to supernaturally cry out to God the Father and call Him Father. Call Him Abba. Call Him Dad. This is one of the most... It's almost like an apparent contradiction, but it's not. When you get it, it's what makes this relationship so amazing. Our ultimate authority is also our most intimate friend and father. And it's not a contradiction. And that's what the Spirit works out in your own spirit, that He shows you, He's the Spirit of Truth. He helps you understand just how holy our God and our judge is. But He also shows you how loving He is and how intimate He wants to be with you. And it says in verse 26 of Romans 8, it says, "Likewise, the Spirit helps us in our weakness; for we do not know what to pray for as we ought, but the Spirit Himself intercedes for us with groanings too deep for words. And he who searches hearts knows what is the mind of the Spirit; because the Spirit intercedes for the saints according to the will of God." It's like God has done everything for us. He gives us this desire. He says, "My Spirit even prays for you." What an amazing thought that right now, God's Spirit, who is dwelling in you, is interceding to the Father on your behalf. In this world where it seems like everyone is rebelling against His commands, laughing at His commands, it's so good to know that God Himself is interceding. The Holy Spirit of God is praying for you to the Father. I really believe that's why you love Him right now. It's why you're in this series right now, is because God has revealed these things at the core of your being. And this is what it means to be a Christian.
It's heavy. It's true, though. It's dwell enough. Sorry, Dave, it goes to the next one automatically. That autoplay feature on there, thanks. He really has done it all for us, made a way for us to be in relationship with us, intercedes for us. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your sweet Spirit that's in this place right now. Lord, I pray against any distractions that the enemy would try to sow into this moment, God. You are the Spirit of truth. Lord, it is Your truth that has set us free, that has opened our eyes. God, may we walk in the truth. May we walk in the light. May we never give foothold to enemy at all. But God, Your Spirit is making intercession. The groan's too deep for words to even express, God, because of Your immense love for us. God, I pray for my friends that are here that are struggling in sin and addictions and problems with their life seem to be falling to pieces. Lord, I pray that Lord, the Spirit of the living God, would come alive in them, and their spirit would bear witness and cry out to you, Abba, Father, to save us, to heal us, to renew us, to make a way where there seems to be no way. God, we need you. We want you. Come and have Your way in the rest of this Bible study tonight. We love you. When Francis begins his teaching by noting how often the Holy Spirit is left out of conversations about God, and how sometimes He is considered less of a person and more of a power or a thing. As we explore what the Bible reveals to us about the Holy Spirit, it's important to remember that we're talking about the third person of the Trinity, God Himself. And when you think about God, to what degree do you think of the Spirit? And how do you tend to describe Him more as a person, a power, a thing, or why? Let us think about that. When you think about God, do you think of the Spirit? And how do you tend to describe Him?
I think about Him as God.
You think about Him as God? Yeah. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Pastor Ursula.
My favorite term that he touched on is comforter.
Yeah.
Comforter. If I could just talk just for a minute on this. The Greek word there is pericles or periclet.
Oh, you're getting ahead of us. This talks about that later.
Oh, okay.
You're good, you're good, you're good.
I'm sorry.
Keep going, keep going. You'll get it, go ahead.
I'll just stop there then.
All right.
So I don't want to get ahead of you. I don't want to get ahead of you.
Okay, good. He's done this Bible study every day, that's why. I'm just kidding. Thanks, though. I love him. I love him so much. So do we refer to Him as a power, as a thing, as a spirit? What do you think of just... Maybe not yourself right now, but maybe in other circumstances? Have you heard it that way? Have you kind of... Have you heard Him preached about a person? Have you ever heard of... What are your thoughts on that? Is anybody... Or is He just as a power, as a thing? Yeah.
My mom has always described Him as a gentleman, like referring to like when somebody has the Holy Spirit in them and how they use it or let it use them, you know, like a vessel kind of a thing. It's... She could kind of distinguish, or anybody can kind of distinguish when they don't have the Holy Spirit. Kind of like... So she's always described as a gentleman, like he's patient, you know? In the way he uses you, and he's a gentleman. He has like a good... I don't know how to... You know where I'm going with that? Like as a gentleman, like he'll use you, and it'll be in a graceful way.
Personaify.
Your words will be gentle, soft, or, you know, sweet, or they'll be direct. Like he could... You have authority. But it's like as a gentleman.
Interesting. I like that. Yes, Allegra.
Since I didn't grow up Pentecostal in baptism and was immersed in the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit in the church I was in, but it was almost as if the Holy Spirit was it and the others were persons. You know, what was this thing that we called the Holy Spirit? And I felt that way for years because I didn't really know. What do we call, or, you know? So it was not as a person. And I think those that are sort of without a Pentecostal teaching of sorts might have that same feeling.
Sure. Francis reminded us, oh, did you have something? Oh, Pam, too, as well.
I was just gonna say, like, when I was younger, I think I viewed the Holy Spirit as more of like a feeling and or like an emotion, like I feel the Holy Spirit. And I feel like I was raised in the AG, so that was definitely an emphasis is like that emotional kind of connection to the Holy Spirit. But as I've gotten older and studied the Word more, like there's so much more complexity to who he is as a person. Now that I'm older and have that more well-rounded view, I think I view him more as a person of the Trinity. Just because there's so many more features like that comforting side, you know, that counseling side and that convicting side. There's just so much to the person of the Holy Spirit. It's not just a feeling. It's not just that like goosebumps on your skin, you know, that you, when you're feeling the presence of God, it's just so much deeper than that.
That's good. Pam?
I was gonna say, the same thing. Growing up in a Pentecostal church and my dad was the pastor, so we were in church all the time, but as a little child, it's like especially on Sunday nights, Sunday night was the night, you know, that the Holy Spirit, I mean, it's just like, back then, it's like if the Holy Spirit didn't fall in some way, and just like you was talking about emotions, if I didn't get emotional, if somebody wasn't running the aisles, if somebody wasn't slaying in the spirit, if somebody wasn't, you know, laughing in the spirit or something, you know, then it just, then it wasn't a good service, you know?
Right.
Always heard that. And so, you know, growing up like that, it's like when I finally, you know, I left home and I had a lot of confusion about the Holy Spirit.
Yeah.
Even though I grew up in a Pentecostal church, I had a lot of confusion. I had a lot of, just like I just, so I really had to just go to God and say, you know, help me understand. You know, because like a lot of people I knew, a lot of pastors, because I knew they were leaving the church. They didn't want nothing to do with it. You know, whereas me, I wanted something different. I knew that there was something, there was a power there drawing me to know the truth.
Yeah.
And I wanted to, I wanted to know that he was more than that emotion. I wanted to know that you're more than just this power, this emotion. You've got to be more. It's got to be more.
Yeah.
You know, and so I started, when I started reading the Scriptures then on my own and listening to other teachings, then, you know, I too then saw him, began to see him as a person.
That's good.
Not just this power that we all on Sunday night service.
That's good.
I can pretty much validate what Pam is saying because I've seen it. But I think one of the most important, I mean, when you look at the Holy Spirit in the Scripture, he's always at the point of action, things happening.
Right.
But I think one of the most valuable things any of us can ever do is just to learn, sit in his presence like a sponge and just soak it in. And let me say this, and I'll try to keep my mouth shut the rest of the lesson until we get to pericles.
Yes, until we get to that. Yes, of course. I love it.
I want to thank you for this, for this series here, this particular one. It has been, it's hard for me to say insightful because so much of it is just, for me, has been stuff that I've heard, studied, preached. But he has explained it in such profound ways.
Yes.
And I want to thank you. I think it is one of the best series I've ever heard throughout my years. And I want to thank you for it.
Yes, Francis Chan, he's an incredible communicator, lover of Jesus. Diane, I see that hand, yeah.
That question made me think of the old hymn that we always sang, "The power, the power gives victory over sin and purity within."
Ooh.
But he's still a he.
Yes.
He's a he, but he gives us that power.
Yes.
And I also like to think of him as the guide, the guide to a blind man. So he avoids injury. He avoids missteps, you know, in his life as he travels.
Yeah. That's good.
So I think, think of the Holy Spirit in a couple ways. The first Peter, chapter one, second Peter, chapter one, says that the Holy Spirit is the source of all prophecy and all words of Scripture. So I think of the Spirit as the crafter and the builder and the designer of all the words we read in Scripture. And then the other one, you know, is over in the later chapters of John where Jesus says, "The Spirit is going to be the one who teaches you all the words that I said and helps you understand what I said." So I really look, look, when I get in my times in the Bible is the sweet times of God in the Spirit, unpacking and teaching me Scripture.
What I love about everybody's answers is that he is, he's, it's like unique to all of us in a specific way, but it's in a way that I feel like would connect with us at the level that we needed to be connected to. You know, for me, I'm thinking of this aspect that Francis is talking about that he helps us be obedient to the Lord, right? And there are so many desires and temptations and things out there in the world that, that are screaming for our attention, that are trying to capture us and enslave us. And the Holy Spirit's like, no, no, I'm gonna give you the power to be not just a, just an overcomer, right? But more than an overcomer in these things. So he helps us. But let's keep going on here. Francis reminds us that the Holy Spirit was present at creation with the Father and the Son. As he read in Genesis 1, 1 through 2, Scripture emphasizes not the mechanics of how the world was created, but that God, all three persons of the Trinity created it. And he kind of brought that to remembrance of, John 1:1 shows us that God, the Son, Jesus, was also involved in creation. We're gonna skip over this question and keep moving on with the study tonight and move on to the next question. "But the same Spirit who created the world and the first humans also dwells within each follower of Christ, redeeming us from sin and strengthening us to do good." Let's read Romans 8:1 to 2 and verse 9. If you have your Bibles, we are at a Bible study. Romans 8:1 to 2 says, "Now there is no condemnation for those who belong to Christ Jesus. And because you belong to him, the power of the life-giving Spirit has freed you from the power of sin that leads to death," and then jumping down to nine. "But you are not controlled by your sinful nature. You are controlled by the Spirit if you have the Spirit of the living God in you. And remember that those who do not have the Spirit of Christ living in them do not belong to him at all." Note how Paul describes him as a spirit of life with the Spirit, and we have no more separation from God. We are in Christ, trusting him, trusting him as God and Savior. The Spirit lives in you, not just sometimes, all the time, giving you power over sinful impulses and unrighteous desires. "If you follow Christ, in what ways have you noticed the Spirit working in your life? And in what ways has he empowered you to live obediently and serve others?" This is a great question. "In what ways have you noticed the Spirit working in your life? In what ways has he empowered you to live obediently and serve others?" Brother Zach, I see that hand. I'll come to you. Oh, no, she's coming. We gotta run her.
I think one of the things that I've become more aware of is how lovingly he, the Spirit, keeps me from doing things that used to be an everyday part of my life that were sin that I didn't realize were destroying me. But now it's not like, you can't do that. You know my word. You were baptized, you know? It's not like that. It's like, hey, you know, you can go live that life where you can stay over here with me. And walking that way for several years now, it's just, you want to, it's like a loving embrace that you don't want to let go of, so.
That's good. Patrick, I see you grabbed the, are you being a runner for me right now?
Yeah, I'm just being a runner, trying to help out.
All right, thanks, brother. Appreciate that.
I'm already disruptive enough.
We love you. I like that. I like that, Zach. I think that this is something that helps us when we have had previous struggles in our life, previous problems, addictions, anger issues, control issues, name it, just the things of the flesh that just pop up in the past. But now that this sin has been broken over us, he's working in our lives, right? And that's, I think that's the key word. It's work in progress, right? Yes, he's broken the power of sin, but as Zach so elegantly put it, it's like, we still have the choice to go back. We still do. But he embraces us and takes us in and says, "I've got a better way for you." Got a lot better way for you, you know? So that's good. Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Says, "In what way has he empowered you to live obediently?" Yes. Bringing to my mind the things that are right at all times. It's empowering because knowing, knowing the right thing to do is important to me because that's part of being righteous. That makes sense. And living that out has given me a spirit, a servant, a servant's spirit. So that I even changed jobs to have a job that is more in service than what I was before. So I guess the empowerment is being more like Christ.
And you don't always know what the right thing is, and that's why you have the Holy Spirit.
That's it. That's good. Empowers us. But I like the way, because that's the question, right? That is, the question is, how does it also empower us to serve others? It's not just for me. It's not. And I think that that's the idea sometimes, oh, God, just keep me out of trouble. God, just help me from, from not going back to the, no, no, but, but there's another element to it. God, how are you gonna empower me to, to serve others? To serve like your son served, to sacrifice like your son sacrificed. Teresa, yeah?
So I have a funny story about this. Sorry, my anxiety is like through the roof. So me and my husband got into a fight, right? I left. I stormed off because, well, you know, I was always right. So I left.
Amen, that's right.
So I went to the store. It was at Pet Smarts. And I came out and I remember sitting in the car and saying to myself, you know what, I'm gonna get myself some coffee. I think I deserve it. I'm angry. I wanted some iced coffee. So I get on the app and I place an order. And then I got this conviction of, you should get your husband one. I said, "No, I'm angry."
There's the Holy Spirit.
That's so good.
And I said, "No," I said, "No, I'm angry with him right now." So I didn't do it, right? So the app was stopped working.
Oh.
So then I went on there again and I'm trying to add my iced coffee and it would not let me add it. I was like, what in the world? And it was like, you know, it'd be really nice of you to get him an iced coffee. I'm like, I'm still angry with him, right? So finally I gave in and I was like, fine, guess what? The app worked. I had both the ice, yeah, both of them went through, paid fine. So I said, "Okay, let me go through drive-throughs."
I love that.
I pull up to the drive-through. There's only two cars in the drive-through. I was like, oh, this is great, right? I get behind the two cars. It's taken forever. And I'm like, all right, you know what? Maybe I'll back up and just go in and grab the drinks. Two cars pulling behind me. So now I'm stuck. Yeah, well, he was letting me cool down a bit, right? So I finally get to the drive-through. I get the two coffees, you know? And I'm like, all right, I'm calmed down, I cooled down. So then I start to drive home. I happen to turn on the radio and I hit shuffle and the radio goes, "Do you do well to be angry?" And like, I came home and he got his coffee. But at that moment, I realized that there is just no arguing with the Holy Spirit. That when he wants you to do something, and he's got jokes.
Yes, he does. Oh, that's good. Oh, that's good.
God bless you.
That's so good.
I have to say, I love that for you.
Yeah, I love that for you. That's great.
No, because it's so true, as a wife, we get so in our heads sometimes. And it's just the littlest things, the littlest nudges, like, well, maybe you should do this, like out of kindness. And I'm like, God, I don't want to be kind right now in this moment. There, there, no. You know, and he gives you those nudges that like, it's like, okay, now you need to be patient. Now you need to hear my word over the radio. Now you need to maybe bless him, you know, in spite of your, your argument or whatever it was, super small, you know? But yeah, he wants you to love and lead in love and have that grace. And it's like, oh, it's hard.
It's good. It's good, and he empowers us. And now the rebuttal from the husband. Yes, Shane?
I'll be brief. Kind of example was Friday when you texted me.
Oh, yeah.
I was sitting at home. We were kind of taking a break for a little bit from some stuff. I was having a lot of doubt and stuff going on. All of a sudden, I look on the church's website. Guess there was a new website. I was on the page of the, the leadership page and then Pastor Joel texts me like that instant. I can't even make it up. So I was like, I was like, the Holy Spirit was like trying to get a hold of me. Like, hey, you need to, I need you here.
I was in the movies when that happened, too. I was, we were watching the King of Kings, the new movie. And I was like, you know what, I just missed them. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot them and text them, I says, right now. And I had a moment where I was like, I'm like, I'm in the movies. I probably shouldn't be doing this right now. But I was like, the Holy Spirit's like, no, you should do it. I did it. And that's how it works.
Yeah, it was definitely.
That's how it works, folks. It's not complicated. We overcomplicate it. It's just that still small voice saying, you should do that. It's serving other people. It's empowering us to do the right thing. It's good stuff. Francis walks us through several passages that show the Spirit's presence throughout the Bible. The Spirit was at work throughout the Old Testament, starting in creation, as we already discussed. He also gave people special abilities, the acts of service and for leadership over the people. And I'm gonna encourage you to do this on your own time. And as I'm talking about this, I don't know if you guys know this, and we've shared this a little bit in our studies. In the last parts of our Bible studies, a section called Going Deeper or Deeper Walk, I encourage you guys to go and look at that on your own time because there's some practices. We don't like just, we don't want to just have head knowledge here. We want to give you guys pragmatics for you to be able to walk this out. And so there's some deeper walks of which we like to kind of give you guys as kind of some homework for you to go take this. And so go read Judges, go read Samuel. "When he chose judges like Othanel and kings like David to lead his people, God also empowered them through his Spirit and the Spirit's presence in certain people then and in all believers now was a sign of God's call on our life." Take some time in Scripture and look at those times, look at those examples of the Spirit of God on individuals in the, in the Old Testament. "The Spirit also took an active role in Christ's life on earth. When the angel Gabriel announced to Mary that she would bear the Messiah, she asked how it would come. And in Luke 1:34 through 35, the Spirit's direct involvement in the incarnation of Jesus, the Son of God, becoming human, was a sign of the Trinity's unified desire to reconcile with sinful people." How is your view of God impacted by knowing that all three persons of the Trinity took part in Jesus's incarnation? It's a pretty heavy question. It's a very heavy question. Take a second to think about that one. How is your view of God impacted by knowing that all three persons of the Trinity took part in Jesus's incarnation? This might be a little bit too heavy for a 8:10 on a Wednesday night. Yes, Sister Becky? Oh, did I?
And this is so powerful. It says, "The Holy Spirit is the divine third person
Oh, yes.
of the Trinity, who is an active agent in creation." And I never thought about this so much, but it says, "Christ's resurrection, our redemption, the Spirit comforts, enlightens, and empowers us to live righteously and reflect Christ in the world." It's like, that pretty much covers everything.
That covers it. That covers. All right, and with that, we're gonna pray. And you guys are done for that. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Well, the Spirit appeared symbolically at Jesus's baptism. We read in Matthew 3:16 to 17, "In a rear scene, all three persons," this is amazing, "all three persons of the Trinity were made apparent to the human senses." Jesus, the Spirit, like a dove, and the voice. Jesus, the Spirit, like a dove, and the voice of the Father from heaven. All three, right there. The Father was pleased with His Son, and sent His Spirit to come upon Him in power. And it's worth noticing that Jesus's mission was so significant that all three persons of the Trinity made their presence known when He launched His ministry. Our salvation is dear to God because He loves us. These next two, the exact couple of questions here, I'd like for you to kind of answer them on your own personal reflection of, do you not, if you do not typically think of the Spirit, what can you do to remember Him more when you consider your salvation? Something for you to think about. In another passage that directly references the Trinity, in Matthew 28:19 to 20, which we just shared two weeks ago on Sunday, is Jesus commanded His followers to share the gospel and to baptize disciples in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We believe in a triune God, and we are called to teach others about God as three persons, including the Spirit. Would you say that you talk about the Spirit when you share the gospel? If not, what do you say about it? And if not, in what ways can you include the Spirit more often when you talk about God with others? Just think about that for a second, and I, I just want to kinda reflect on it a little bit. How often do we talk about it? We usually talk about Jesus, right? "Jesus is our Savior. Jesus saved me from my sin. Jesus did all these..." And we talk about Jesus, because I think maybe, maybe there just might be a part of us that thinks about, "If we talk about the Spirit, that might just be, that might scare some people." They'd be like, "Spirit, what are you talking about? Are you talking about Casper the ghost over here? You talking about, what kind of spirit are you talking about here?" Right? And so we don't include the Spirit in the conversation of the empowerment of our life in the salvation. We don't, we don't talk about it when we, when we share the gospel. But if, if you do, what, what do you say about Him? When you're telling your story, when you're talking about salvation. Anybody here, maybe just, have any of you guys ever talked about the Holy Spirit? When you're sharing your story about? Yes? And what do you say? What, what's the, what's the things that come to, to mind when you, when you talk about it? Yeah, Patrick?
Typically, when it comes up for me, it's more in prayer. But I have a lot of people at work who think I was in the military, because I tend to stand like that. I do a lot of things that people think are moral, even though we've talked about some other stuff. But um, typically when I pray, I thank God for being my Father, and I thank Jesus for being my Savior, and I thank the Holy Spirit for being my God.
That's good. That's awesome. What else, other ways, what other ways do we incorporate talking about the Spirit in the salvation story? Yeah.
With me, the Holy Spirit has been my life since I've gotten saved. And He goes with me every place I go, Him, Father, Jesus, and Holy Spirit. If I lose something in the house, I misplace things constantly, is all, I can look and look for an hour or two hours, I can't find it. I ask the Holy Spirit, and in three seconds, I have it.
Yeah.
He leads me right to it. And I met the Holy Spirit when I first got the baptism and the Holy Spirit. And I didn't have the baptism. I don't know if I should say it or not, because we're in church. But I was in church one day, an Assembly of God church, and I seen something come into the church. And it was a creature. And it came down the aisle, and it went up to the altar, and it vanished. Nobody else saw it. After the church service, I went to the preacher, Pastor Granville. I said, "I seen this." He said, "No, you didn't see it." I said, "I seen this." And he brushed it off. And after that, everything started bad happening. He died. He got sick and he died. The church split. We had all kind of problems. And the Lord told me, He got a bunch of us, we were supposed to go and pray through the church. We did that. I, I did that. Everybody else backed out the last minute. I was at the church by myself at night, and it was spooky and dark and back in the woods. And I, I said, "Well, Lord, nobody's coming. You're here and I'm here." So went through the church, and I prayed. I got the oil, anointed everything, and prayed. And I went back into my seat, and I sat down, and I was praying out loud, and next thing, I wasn't praying in English anymore. And I got the Holy Spirit, and ever since then, the Holy Spirit has been a huge part of my life. And I keep telling people, "If you can't find something, ask the Holy Spirit."
Yes.
I paint. I do acrylic paintings. And they say, "Oh, that's beautiful. How do you do that?" I says, "I have help. I hold the brush, and the Holy Spirit does the rest." But if I go to the grocery store, I'm walking through the store, and I'm talking to Him. And people think, "Yeah, what's wrong with her?" But if I can't find something, I talk to Him. He, God, Jesus, and Holy Spirit are the biggest part of my life continually, day and night. I talk to them all three continually. But I could not, I could not make it one breath without them.
Yeah. And that's, I think that, that's the, the, the perfect transition or encompassing of, of the tension that we're feeling that, that Francis is trying to address. That sometimes we don't look at Him as a person, right? We don't include Him in, in the conversations. We sense His presence. You know, you talked about, some of you talked about how it was a power, how it was a feeling, how it was a, a movement, emotion, or whatever. But the reality is that if, if God is wanting such an intimate relationship with us, to walk with us, right? To have a conversation, "Well, it's just you and me, it's just you and me, Holy Spirit here, right? Doing what we need to do. You walk me through it. You talk me through it. You show me how to do it." That's the, that's the type of relationship, that's the type of connection. That, and so for us, the tension that, that Francis is bringing to the surface as we talk about this is that maybe we need to start including that in our language more often. And talking about the Holy Spirit as somebody who is an active member in our life right now. That are we listening for His voice? Are we listening to the Spirit of truth? And recognizing Him for His power, for what He's doing, for who He is? And it's not just a goosebump, it's not just a feeling, but He is an active part of our lives. And giving us the language to say, "God, Holy Spirit, You're here. Holy Spirit, You're welcome. Holy Spirit, You're active in this moment, in my life, and thank You for what You are doing to help me to walk in that as well." Well, let's keep going on here, because we're gonna get to this peak of the Greek, where Pastor Herschel's gonna take over the Bible study for us and explain what's going on. "When Jesus was preparing His followers for this coming death, He told them that it would be better for Him, it'd be better when He was gone, because He would send the Spirit." Francis read in John, chapter 14, 15 to 17, 26, "That Jesus promised to send the Spirit, who come alongside us to meet our needs, whether emotionally, intellectually, or spiritually." His presence is with us always. When enduring a trial, how aware are you that the, that God's Spirit is right there with you? And what do you do to remind yourself of His presence? Yes, Teresa?
I'm gonna share a little bit more of my testimony. So, a couple of re-things. When I was having people pray over me, when I started first having spiritual warfare, I'm, I, before I even started reading the Bible, something said Revelation 20. And I was like, "What in the world is that?" Said, right, right? So I looked it up, or they actually started reading it. And I'm sure everybody will look at it. So there was that. And then, when I had one of the recordings, I was being threatened, and one of the things they said was, "Where is your God? Where's He at? He's not with you. He's letting you go through all this stuff." And the first thing that came to my mind, I said back was, "I'm right there with you. So He's with me." So after that, they kinda left me alone for a little while. But I don't know, it's just a hard thing to think about right now, but um...
So what do, what do you do that reminds, do, what do you do to remind yourself of His presence? So you had that experience, that was that. So when you go into another moment, when you go into another time, another trial, another issue, what do you do to remind yourself that the Spirit's there with you?
I pray. I ask for help.
Yeah.
Um, I look at the Holy Spirit as a friend.
Yes.
Like, not the friend that's like, you know, gonna tell you, "You look pretty in a bad dress." He's gonna be the one that tells you, "Ah, you might not want to wear that." But
Yes.
He's very truthful.
Yes.
Um, so in moments like that, I pray, I fast. Um, but then I remember Scripture. I have a bunch of highlights in there, says, "Do not be afraid, and I am always with you."
Yes. Yeah. Run into the Scripture. Yeah, go ahead Zach, yeah.
That's huge.
Yeah, that is huge.
What you just said. I know, I know you like, didn't just throw it out there, but you pray.
Yep.
You pray. That's huge. Some people don't do that first.
No, they freak out.
They freak out, yeah.
They freak out. They freak out.
It's an easy one. We, we, when we were, we've had marital issues before. And, you know, in a, in a difficult conversation, we've actually intent, this is, this might seem crazy, but anyway, we pull up an extra chair. And that's Jesus, and that's the Holy Spirit. And you're like, you know, you, you know if He was there, you wouldn't say something. So He's there, and there's a chair. So just remember, right? I mean, and that is just...
Everybody write that one down.
Yeah, you could've just dropped the migrate there.
That's actually a technique that is often referred to in Christian counseling.
I just love these practical thoughts that are coming out tonight. Um, if you remember Jesus when He was tempted, what did He do? He used the Word of God against the word, against Satan's accusations. And that is our, what's this thing? That is our greatest defense and our greatest offense, the Word of God. And if that's hidden in your heart, it's right there on your lips, it's right there in the forefront of your mind. And when the enemy comes in like a flood, the scriptures come up, and the darts, the fiery darts of the enemy are extinguished. So uh, if Jesus saw fit to use the Word of God in His, His defense against the accusations of the enemy, we need to follow suit, fall in line.
And I'll be really quick, so we can get to Herschel on the next part. But I've found that life is very hard, and we're faced with choices that we have to make that sometimes aren't easy and they're confusing. And I'm a pros and cons guy. And I find that after I've done my analyzing of everything, if I move toward this direction, it feels like there's a fire that wells up inside of me. And if I move away from it toward the other choice, that fire kinda dies down. And that's how I try to, I think that's the Holy Spirit.
Yeah, yeah. As Sister Becky was, uh, listening to Brother Gordon say something, she said, "It's called the sword of the Spirit. The Word of God is the sword of the Spirit."
Part of your armor, yeah.
That's right. Cuts both ways. That's right. John 14:16, "Jesus promises that His Father will send another counselor." Footnotes in biblical texts offer alternative translations to counselor, comforter, advocate, helper are the most common. The Greek word being translated as pericles, right? Is that how you say it? Correct? Pericles, or periclet, a term that refers to the Holy Spirit. As the periclet, the Spirit dwells within believers, constantly in our presence. Unlike Jesus, the God-man, who could be in only one place at a time. He is characterized by abiding assistance and empowerment, giving Christians the help, the comfort, the counsel, and wisdom we need. Because the English language does not have a single word encompassing all of the characteristics found in the pericles, translators are forced to choose one of the several meanings. In John 14:17, Jesus also describes the Spirit as the Spirit of truth. He teaches us truth and gives us wisdom. We, as we surrender to Christ, the Spirit opens our eyes to truth. And read, it says, "Read Acts 2:37 to 38. As Francis shared, the Spirit-led disciples preached to the crowds, who were pierced to the heart. Their repentance and baptism revealed that the Holy Spirit had shown them the truth about Jesus, and He does the same with us." We're coming to the end of our time here. I want to share the last and final words with you guys. Please look over the, the rest of the content here. It's been a wonderful night of, of these pragmatics, but it's this, the Spirit puts God's will into action. That's huge. The Spirit puts God's will into action, and by His power, we can live obediently, choosing right more than wrong, serving others, and comprehending His gift of mercy. He is fully God, yet abides with us, so that we will never be parted from Him. He invites us to bring Him our troubles and seek His wisdom. And since Jesus ascended to heaven, the Spirit is God with us. And that's a gift. What a gift. In the following section, find the practical ideas to incorporate what you're learning about the Spirit into everyday life. I know this is tough. I wanted to get into so much more, because it talks about the gifts of the Holy Spirit. Talks about these things later on. I'd love to get into those, but we just don't have the time tonight. So make sure that you guys look over that. Last, but definitely not least, who is the Holy Spirit? The Spirit is the divine third person of the Trinity, who is an active agent in creation, in Christ's resurrection, and our redemption. The Spirit comforts, enlightens, and empowers us to live righteously and reflect on Christ to the world. Holy Spirit, You are welcome in this place. Holy Spirit, You're welcome always at Marlo Assembly of God. Holy Spirit, we thank You for being the Spirit of truth that has opened our eyes tonight to Your omniscience, Your omnipresence, that You are within us. Thank You, Jesus, for saying to us, Your disciples, that it is better for You to go, so that the Holy Spirit can come and empower us, and dwell in us, and lead us, and guide us in all truth. God, we were lost at one point, but then You found us. You opened our eyes. And Your Spirit now is empowering us to be the believers that You called us to be. That Jesus is not just about us, what not doing what's right and what's doing what's wrong, but God, You're also empowering us to serve others and to carry out Your will. God, when we feel lost, when we feel broken, when we feel like we're missing the will, missing the calling, God, may You bring back to remembrance the truth. The truth of Your Holy Spirit that is dwelling inside of us, that's yearning for a relationship with us, that is desiring to lead us, God. Forgive us for the moments where we have not listened to You. Help us, God, be more sensitive to Your Holy Spirit, and may we be strong enough and obedient when You call to us to do the things that You've called us to do. Help us to be the people that You've called us to be, that we can serve others, serve You. We love You, Lord, and we thank You in Your name. Amen. Can't wait to see you guys on Sunday. Love you. Be safe. Enjoy this amazing, beautiful, warm weather out there. It's so great. So good. Be blessed.